The Senate will come to order. The senators will please take their seats. Those persons not entitled to the privilege of the floor will please retire to the gallery. The senators and all those in attendance will stand and be led in prayer by the Reverend Benjamin P. Campbell, pastor emeritus at St. Paul's Episcopal Church in Richmond, Virginia.
Let's pray. God, thank you for these few moments of quiet. Thank you for the Senate of the Commonwealth of Virginia. Help us to breathe in your respect for us. You do respect us so much that you've given us the treasure of self-governance. Help us to extend that respect to one another and to all who help this assembly take place. Help us never to forget your respect for every resident of this Commonwealth in whose name we gather here today. Bless all of us, oh Lord, in our work and in our living. Renew in each of us an earnest desire for the common good. Amen.
All those present will record their vote. Aye. Clerk will close the roll.
You have a quorum, Mr. President.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Clerk will report a certain communication on the desk.
Commonwealth of Virginia Executive Department proclamation. In accordance with the provisions of Article 4, Section 6, and Article 5, Section 5 of the Constitution of Virginia and the powers thereby vested in the governor to call a special session of the General Assembly, I, Ralph S. Northam, Governor of Virginia, do hereby summon the members of the Senate and the House of Delegates constituting the General Assembly of Virginia to meet in a special session in their respective chambers in the Capitol at Richmond commencing the 30th of August 2018 for the purpose of redrawing the districts of the Virginia House of Delegates. Given under my hand as Governor of Virginia and under the lesser seal of the Commonwealth at Richmond this 20th day of August 2018 and in the 243rd year of the Commonwealth. Signed, Ralph S. Northam, Governor of Virginia, and Kelly T. Thomason, Secretary of the Commonwealth.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The senators operating under the rules of the Senate adopted the commencement of the 2016 session. Senator from James City County, Senator Norman, do Mr. Ross's purposes of recognizing any absences today?
Good afternoon, Mr. President.
Good afternoon, Senator.
Mr. President, I would respectfully request that the Journal reflect a leave of absence for the following senators who are out of town on extraordinarily pressing personal business, and that would include Senator Deeds, Senator Donovan, Senator Howell, Senator Locke, and Senator Palaisvieux-Français McDougall.
I thank the senator. The Journal will so note. Senator from James City County, Senator Norman.
That they never give me a script. And the script did not include Senator Black, but if you would also have the Journal reflect his absence, that would be very nice.
Thank the senator. The Journal will so note. The chair recognizes the senator from Rockingham, Senator Obenshein, for the purpose of taking up a resolution.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the rules be suspended, that the Committee on Rules be discharged from further consideration of the operating resolution, which is on everybody's desk in blue, that the readings of the title and engrossment be waived, and that Senate Resolution 701 be taken up for immediate consideration.
Thank the senator. Question is, shall the rules be suspended, the Committee on Rules be discharged from further consideration of the resolution, readings of the title and engrossment be waived, and Senate Resolution 701 be taken up for immediate consideration? All in favor of the motion will record their vote. Aye. Those opposed, no. Are the senators ready to vote? Have all the senators voted? Do any senators desire to change their vote? Clerk will close the roll.
Ayes, thirty-four, no, zero.
Ayes, thirty-four, no, zero. The rules are suspended to take up the resolution for immediate consideration. Clerk will report the resolution.
Senate Resolution Number 701, Special Session Two, Operating Resolution. Resolved by the Senate of Virginia that the comptroller be directed to issue his warrants on the treasure payable from the contingent fund of the Senate to accomplish the work of the Senate of Virginia as reported by the clerk of the Senate to the Senate Rules Committee during the 2018 Special Session Two. Necessary payments to cover contingent and incidental expenses will be certified by the clerk of the Senate or her designee, and be it resolved further that members of the Senate shall receive session per diem and mileage reimbursement for any day they attend a scheduled floor session at which an attendance roll call is taken. Session per diem shall not be allowed for legislative assistance. Session per diem shall not be allowed for members of the Senate during a recess of the special session. However, members may receive compensation while the General Assembly is in recess as provided in 30-19.12 of the Code of Virginia and in the 2018-2020 Appropriations Act as follows. One, members of any standing committee authorized by the Senate and the Committee on Rules. Two, members of any committee of conference. And three, members of any legislative committee, commission, or council established by the General Assembly.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Senator from Rockingham, Senator Obenshein.
Mr. President, with that elaborate explanation, I move that the resolution be agreed to.
The question is, shall the resolution be agreed to? All in favor of agreeing to the resolution will record their vote. Aye. Those opposed, no. Are the senators ready to vote? Have all the senators voted? Do any senators desire to change their vote? Clerk will close the roll.
Ayes, thirty-four, no, zero.
Ayes, thirty-four, no, zero. The resolution is agreed to. Senator Obenshein is ordered to inform the House of Delegates that the Senate is duly organized and ready to proceed to business. Senator from Franklin, Senator Stanley? Now comes the time in the morning hour where we get to welcome our distinguished guests here in the Senate Gallery, and we are grateful that you're all here today with us. I will give a reminder that the way this will proceed is the senator will stand up and recognize an individual or group. I will then give the warm welcome of the Senate, and we will all then applaud together at the very end at once. So I'd like to begin by calling on the senator from Williamsburg, Senator Mason.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, arise for an introduction.
Thank the senator. You have the floor.
Mr. President, I believe in the gallery today with us, although they may be down the hall, is a group from One Virginia 2021. You've heard much about them over the past several years, arguing and working for nonpartisan redistricting, so they have a vested interest in our work here today. And so, Mr. President, I'd appreciate you giving the warm welcome to the Senate.
I thank the senator. Would any members of Virginia 2021 in the gallery please rise? They are down the hall, but I would like to welcome them here to the Capitol, particularly on today, where we've taken up the issue of redistricting, and thank them for their focus and their advocacy here in the Commonwealth. So they will see this later on television. If we all could give a round of applause to our friends from One Virginia 2021. Senator from Petersburg, Senator Dance.
Thank you, Mr. President. I rise for two introductions.
I thank the senator. You have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Visiting us today in the gallery are a large delegation of women. And there are two groups, but I'm going to take the liberty, Mr. President, to introduce them as one because they are definitely here as one group, one interest that they're share. On Sunday in central Virginia, there was a recognition of Women's Equality Day. And actually, there are about ten events across the state of Virginia. In northern Virginia, there was Senator Servo participating in recognition of Women's Equality Day. In Hampton Roads, Virginia, there was Senator Mamie Locke and Senator Louise Lucas hosting an event. And in central Richmond, Virginia, there was Senator Glenn Sturd event, Senator Jennifer McClellan and I hosting that event. And the main focus was how these women that were gathered there began their work, and that was through the suffrage march that was held in 1913 that would give women the right to vote. There was a national group of women known as the National Women's Party, and they're here. But there was also another not-so-well-known group, was the group of African-American women that marched in that suffrage march, and they were the Women of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated. They too formed that year, and at six weeks in, they made their first civic duty as one to march as a part, we're carrying their banner, of the National Women's Party's suffrage march that ultimately subsequently gave women the right to vote. Those ladies joined forces over a hundred years ago, and they were in large numbers across Virginia, participated in the various events that were held recognizing Women's Equality Day. When they got the vote one hundred years ago, though, they missed something important that was full equal rights, that they would be considered just as equal, probably a little bit more so, than men, believe it or not. It's been a hundred years' journey, but guess what? On Sunday, across Virginia, the commitment has been renewed that they should seal the deal and finish the job. They got the vote, now it's all about Equal Rights Amendment, rights for all, women who birthed every man that we have in the world. Please, no clapping, no clapping, my friends, no clapping. Get it, Mr. President, that's not us. But they are here today as one, and they are the National Women's Party representatives as well as the ladies of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated. They are here as one group, one voice to say, it is time, y'all, let's do the right thing. So, Mr. President, I would ask you to give those awesome ladies the warm welcome of the Senate. Thank you.
I thank the senator. Would our distinguished guests from Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated and the National Women's Party in the gallery please rise if you're able? Thank you all so much for joining us here today. Thank you for your leadership here in the Commonwealth of Virginia and around this country. I think Senator Dance put it so eloquently about the power of your voice and of your work, the importance of the issue of making sure that women have exactly the same rights as men, and that they have the opportunities that we all want for everyone here in the Commonwealth of Virginia and around this nation. I also want to especially thank the new leadership of the National Women's Party. She's a familiar face to me, Zakiya Thomas, who was my campaign manager for Lieutenant Governor, and really is a powerful voice here in Virginia, teaching a class at Georgetown Law School as well. So thank you for being here today. And the ladies of Delta Sigma Theta, founded, of course, in 1913. My mom is NKA, but don't tell her I love Deltas, too. And the National Women's Party, what a powerful voice you have. You're welcome here anytime in the Senate and in the Capitol, and I would ask everyone please to join me in extending the warmest welcome of the Senate to our incredibly distinguished guests. And my great leader here in the Senate and dear friend, Madam Clerk, reminds me that the great Aretha Franklin was a Delta, and I think we should recognize that as well. The Senate will stand at ease.
Senate will come to order. The senators will please take their seats. Senator from Rockingham, Senator Obenshane.
Mr. President, I believe that Senate Joint Resolution Number 7001 has been distributed. And accordingly, I would, I don't know whether the title has been read the first time or whether it needs to be, but in the event that it does not, I move to suspend the rules, waive the...
Clerk will read the title.
Senate Joint Resolution Number 7001, Limiting Legislation to Be Considered by the 2018 Special Session Two of the General Assembly in Establishing a Schedule for the Conduct of Business Coming Before Such Special Session.
Senator from Rockingham, Senator Obenshane.
Thank you, Mr. President. At this point, I would move to suspend the rules, waive the second constitutional reading.
Thank you, Senator. Question is, shall the rules be suspended and the second constitutional reading be waived? All in favor of the motion will record their vote. Aye. Those opposed, no. Are the senators ready to vote? Have all the senators voted? Do any senators desire to change their vote? Clerk will close the roll.
Ayes, thirty-three, no, zero.
Ayes, thirty-three, no, zero. The rules are suspended and the second reading is waived. Senator from Rockingham, Senator Obenshane.
Mr. President, I would move that we engross Senate Joint Resolution Number 7001 and advance it to its third constitutional reading.
Thank the senator. The question is, shall the joint resolution be engrossed and advanced to its third constitutional reading? All in favor of the motion will say aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes have it. The resolution is engrossed and advanced to its third constitutional reading. Senator from Rockingham, Senator Obenshane.
Mr. President, I would move that we suspend the rules, waive the third constitutional reading.
Thank the senator. The question is, shall the rules be suspended and the third constitutional reading be waived? All in favor of the motion will record their vote. Aye. Those opposed, no. Are the senators ready to vote? Have all the senators voted? Do any senators desire to change their vote? Clerk will close the roll.
Ayes, thirty-three, no, zero.
Ayes, thirty-three, no, zero. The rules are suspended and the third constitutional reading is waived. Senator from Rockingham, Senator Obenshane.
Mr. President, I move that the bill be, that the resolution be agreed to. In speaking briefly, Mr. President...
Senator has the floor.
This is the procedural resolution that defines the scope of this special session consistent with the proclamation issued by the governor. It limits the matters that can be taken up. The resolutions are going to be single-house resolutions. And for the rest of the resolution is pretty consistent with our standard procedural resolution. So I would move that the resolution at this point be agreed to.
Thank the senator. The question is, shall Senate Joint Resolution Number 7001 be agreed to? All in favor of the motion will record their vote. Aye. Those opposed, no. Are the senators ready to vote? Have all the senators voted? Do any senators desire to change their vote? Clerk will close the roll.
Ayes, thirty-four, no, zero.
Ayes, thirty-four, no, zero. The resolution is agreed to. Senator from Rockingham, Senator Obenshane, please take a message to deliver to the House of Delegates. Thank you. Senate will be at ease. Senate will be at ease.
The Senate will come to order. The senators will please take their seats. Senator from Rockingham, Senator Obenshein.
Mr. President, heaven forbid should we depart from the traditions that have grown around this body and this building. It appears that the House of Delegates has passed a procedural resolution, House Joint Resolution Number 7001. And accordingly, I would move that the rules be suspended, that the Committee on Rules be discharged from further consideration of the resolution, and that the readings of the title be waived, and that House Joint Resolution Number 7001 now be taken up for immediate consideration.
Thank the senator. The question is, shall the rules be suspended, the Committee on Rules be discharged from further consideration of the resolution, the readings of the title be waived, and House Joint Resolution 7001 be taken up for immediate consideration? All in favor of the motion will record their vote. Aye. Those opposed, no. Are the senators ready to vote? Have all the senators voted? Do any senators desire to change their vote? Clerk will close the roll.
Ayes, thirty-four. He rose.
Ayes, thirty-four. Noes, zero. The rules are suspended to take up the resolution for immediate consideration. Senator from Rockingham, Senator Obenshein.
Mr. President, I would move that the resolution be agreed to. It is, as I read it, identical to the resolution that we just passed as Senate Joint Resolution Number 7001.
Thank the senator. The question is, shall the resolution be agreed to? All in favor of the motion will record their vote. Aye. Those opposed, no. Are the senators ready to vote? Have all the senators voted? Do any senators desire to change their vote? Clerk will close the roll.
Ayes, thirty-four. Noes, zero.
Ayes, thirty-four. Noes, zero. The resolution is agreed to. Senator from Rockingham, Senator Obenshein, will inform the House of Delegates of the action of the Senate. Resolutions, petitions, and bills are now in order. Junior Senator from Richmond City, Senator McClellan.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I move that the rules be suspended and Senate Resolution 703 be taken up for immediate consideration.
Thank the senator. The question is, shall the rules be suspended and Senate Resolution 703 be taken up for immediate consideration? All in favor of the motion will record their vote. Aye. Those opposed, no. Are the senators ready to vote? Have all the senators voted? Do any senators desire to change their vote? Clerk will close the roll.
Ayes, thirty-three. Noes, zero.
Ayes, thirty-three. Noes, zero. The rules are suspended to take up the resolution for immediate consideration. The clerk will please read the title.
Senate Resolution Number 703 commending St. John Baptist Church.
Mr. President, I move the resolution be agreed to.
Thank the senator. Question is, shall the resolution be agreed to? All in favor of agreeing to the resolution will say aye. Those opposed, no. The resolution is agreed to. Senator from Alexandria, Senator Eben.
Mr. President, I move that the rules be suspended and Senate Resolution 702 be taken up for immediate consideration.
Thank the senator. The question is, shall the rules be suspended and Senate Resolution 702 be taken up for immediate consideration? All in favor of the motion will record their vote. Aye. Those opposed, no. Are the senators ready to vote? Have all the senators voted? Do any senators desire to change their vote? Clerk will close the roll.
Ayes, thirty-two. Noes, zero.
Ayes, thirty-two. Noes, zero. The rules are suspended to take up the resolution for immediate consideration. Clerk will please read the title.
Senate Resolution Number 702 commending Paul C. Smeedberg.
Senator from Alexandria, Senator Eben.
I move the resolution be agreed to.
Thank the senator. Question is, shall the resolution be agreed to? All in favor of agreeing to the resolution will say aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes have it, the resolution is agreed to. Senator from James C. County, Senator Norman.
Mr. President, inquire of the clerk. Does that complete today's arduous calendar?
Yes, sir.
Thank the senator. Is there any other business to come before the Senate?
Mr. President.
Senator from Alexandria, Senator Eben.
I ask that we return to the morning hour for purposes of an announcement.
Without objection, we'll return to the morning hour. Senator has the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Gun Violence Prevention Caucus will meet immediately upon adjournment of the other body in Senate Room Three, in the Senate room in the Capitol extension.
Thank the senator. Senator from King George, Senator Stewart.
Thank you, Mr. President. A brief moment of personal privilege.
Senator has the floor.
Mr. President, members of the body, we all know that our governor has worked very, very hard since he's been elected to promote Virginia, and he wants to get us back to being first in business, education, jobs, everything there is. And I want to compliment him because he also wants us to be first in fishing. And I have told you all more than once, he is a much better governor than he is a fisherman. God knows, I've known him for a good while now, and I've tried my best to teach him how to fish, and at least he doesn't give up. But anyway, Mr. President, he has organized a challenge against the state of North Carolina, North Carolina's governor. And we're going to prove once and for all that Virginia anglers are better than North Carolina anglers. And the governor's worked very hard on this, and there are a couple of us that are going to join him in the team to go out and beat North Carolina. So next week, I would ask one thing of you all. Just think about us and give a little private cheer so we can win and beat North Carolina, and give the governor a little prayer so hopefully he'll catch a fish.
Thank the senator. The senior senator from Fairfax, Senator Sasslaw.
Mr. President, a point of personal privilege, and I'll be brief.
The senator has the floor.
Last Saturday evening, this country lost one of its top citizens. And Senator and former Navy Captain John McCain, as you all know, passed away. This was a pretty remarkable individual. And, you know, on Sunday, The Washington Post had a leadoff editorial, and it was entitled "The Irreplaceable American." And they were right. Everybody in here knows the story. He could have been freed after he was shot down in 1967. He stayed on for five and a half more years until all the other prisoners were released, enduring continuous torture. I wasn't aware of this, but he was tortured so badly, he couldn't comb his own hair. He couldn't raise his arms, his hands above his shoulders. And he had a 36-year career in Congress. His votes at times angered his own party, his votes at times angered the other party. But let me tell you something. This was a guy who had only one goal, and that was to make this a better country to live in. And you got to admire that. When John F. Kennedy, in the mid-1950s, wrote that book, Profiles in Courage, Senator McCain is exactly the kind of person he had in mind. And in 1999, in fact, McCain shared that award, that Profiles in Courage award, with another U.S. senator. We're not likely to see the likes of somebody like this again for a long, long time. But I got to tell you, he was one hell of a guy, and this country is going to miss him. And when we adjourn today, I would ask that we adjourn in memory of Senator McCain.
Thank the senator. Do any other senators wish to be recognized? Senator, the clerk will report any announcements on the desk.
Do not have any, sir.
Thank the clerk. Chair recognizes the senator from Bedford, Senator Newman.
Mr. President, I move that the Senate do now adjourn pursuant to House Joint Resolution 7001. And when we do so, we do so in honor and memory of United States Senator John McCain.
Thank the senator. Question is, shall the Senate adjourn pursuant to House Joint Resolution 7001? And that when we do so, we do so in the memory of Senator John S. McCain. All in favor of the motion will say aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes have it, the motion is agreed to. The Senate stands adjourned.